Bonsoir, bienvenue à la réunion plenière du 12 mai. Welcome to the committee of hall en mai de 12. Madame Rois, est-ce qu'on a des déclarations conflits d'intérêts ?
Aucun conflit d'intérêt n'a été déclaré.
Parfait, on a quelques présentations ce soir. On va débuter, je pense avec notre chef de police qui va nous présenter les... la nouvelle force policière, les nouveaux employés embauchés si je me trompe pas. Bonsoir.
Bonsoir madame Maress, bonsoir tous les conseillers, merci de l'invitation. Oui c'est ça, c'est suite à quelques discussions qu'on a eues dans le passé, je pense que c'était le moment important de présenter quelques nouveaux policiers, mais des nouveaux et des un petit peu moins nouveaux. Dans les trois quatre dernières années, je pense qu'il y a eu peut-être quelques policiers qui n'ont pas eu la chance de venir se présenter. Je pense que c'était le moment important. Malheureusement, on avait deux de plus sur la liste, mais pour des raisons... pour certaines raisons, ils n'ont pas pu se présenter ce soir, mais on va les amener à des réunions prochaines. Donc à l'extrême droite, Marc Poitrard, Marc est originaire de Gransaut. Il était avec nous depuis trois ans, quatre ans ? Deux ans, excuse. Deux ans. Marc fait partie de l'équipe de patrouille puis on est très content d'avoir avec nous. Ensuite, Jean-Lambert Isabelle Haché. Isabelle est avec nous, Isabelle vient de Bathurst et est également membre de l'équipe de patrouille. Jean-Lambert Alexandre Gagnon. Alexandre est avec nous dans l'année dernière, dans l'année dernière année. Aussi membre de la patrouille, Alexandre est originaire de Bonaventure au Québec. On l'accueille comme acadien. Le prochain, Jean-Lambert Justin Dupuis. Justin est avec nous aussi sur les équipes de patrouille. Justin est originaire de Fredericton, donc on espère ne pas le perdre, mais on est bien content d'avoir une fois. Et finalement, Jean-Lambert Sonny Leveque, Sonny est originaire de Saint Quentin, Louvence-Wick, dans les derniers moments est arrivé à Bathurst. Donc tout frais et c'est ça. C'est nos cinq membres pour ce soir. Comme je disais, on a plusieurs autres nouveaux membres qui vont venir aussi. On a d'autres qui sont à l'Académie présentement qui vont arriver au début juin pour leur formation sur le terrain. Donc la force policière de Bathurst est en excellente position présentement. Puis on est très fiers du support qu'on a eu de la ville. On vous remercie et on va vous amener les prochains dans les prochaines semaines.
Mais j'aimerais dire, Marc fait quand même deux ans, mais quand même bienvenue. Isabelle, Alexandre, Justin et Sonny. Bienvenue parmi l'équipe de la Ville de Bathurst. Il y en a certains que j'ai vus, mais il y en a que c'est encore nouveau. Surtout Sonny, bienvenue chez nous. J'espère que tout va bien, que l'intégration va bien dans la région. Je vais vous dire que la force policière de Bathurst, Paco c'est Bathurst, mais c'est quand même une belle équipe, vous avez une très belle équipe. On espère que vous allez rester avec nous à long terme, comme long, long, long terme.
So thank you very much. Any questions ?
Any questions, anything you want to add ? No ?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, merci d'avoir pris le temps de venir nous rencontrer. On s'en va au nouveau directeur exécutif des services d'incendies. On va aller à Mr Pedigirl.
Thank you worship. I'll just say a couple words here just to introduce and introduce the public to our new executive director. Mr Jean-Philippe Houdin joined the city of Bathurst as the new executive director of fire services. He's an accomplished fire services professional with an exceptional track record spanning both France and Canada since 1997. From his beginnings as a volunteer firefighter in France to serving as a deputy chief in Edmonton, he has gained invaluable experience in all facets of firefighting, fire prevention and emergency management. In his previous role, he notably spearheaded dedicated fire prevention division, raising inspection standards and implementing initiatives that marked improved public safety across the region. Mr Houdin holds credentials as an IFSAC evaluator for the office of the fire marshal along with advanced certifications in fire investigation, incident command and lean six sigma. Please join me in extending a warm welcome to Jean-Philippe as he embarks on his new chapter with our city of Bathurst.
Bonsoir monsieur Jean-Philippe, on s'est vu quelques reprises. Je vais vous donner le micro, voilà.
Bonsoir, bonsoir tout le monde, merci pour votre accueil. C'est une immensioirété pour moi d'être parmi vous ce soir pour le nouveau mandat qui est le mien en tant que directeur des services d'incendies de Bathurst. Puis comme j'ai bien dit, des services d'incendies puisque comme vous le savez, nous avons eu une étude qui nous demande de faire une amalgamation des services d'incendies de Bathurst et de Saint-Anne Regional. Donc le mandat qui va être le mien. Ça va être une belle aventure avec votre collaboration et je vous remercie d'avance pour votre confiance.
Merci d'être parmi nous, ça fait un peu quoi, deux semaines maintenant ?
Ça fait deux semaines oui, j'ai commencé le 28 avril.
28 avril, ben bienvenue parmi l'équipe.
Merci encore.
Là, on s'en va à une présentation festival Chaleur Bantou, monsieur Pecos. Le micro est déjà là, il y a juste à peine de préparer votre écran. Bon, ok, on est bon.
Bonsoir tout le monde. Je suis Pecos N'chao, je suis ancien diplômé du CCNB, du programme d'administration des affaires. Et je suis arrivé à Bathurst en pleine pandémie en 2020. C'était pas la meilleure période pour immigrer au Canada. Fait que j'ai pu traverser tous ces obstacles là et c'est tout cela qui m'a permis aujourd'hui de bâtir une expérience quand même importante pour tout ce qui a trait à l'intégration et le développement communautaire. Alors mon projet, je vais vous expliquer un peu la genèse avant de plonger dans la présentation. Étant moi-même étudiant ici, à chaque fois qu'on finissait les sessions, beaucoup de nos confrères se déplacèrent pour le Québec ou pour l'Ontario pour avoir du divertissement ou des reproductés d'emplois. Fait que moi, je me suis dit comment est-ce que je peux participer à réduire cela et participer à l'effort des collectivités à réténir le maximum de talents possible dans la ville. C'est parce que je me suis attelé comme ça à créer des activités communautaires pendant l'été pour essayer de réténir le maximum de jeunes possible. Il y a l'année passée, j'ai commencé avec un premier tournoi de soccer qui, le modèle a été assez particulier parce que en plus des équipes que j'avais localement, j'allais recruter d'autres équipes un peu de partout dans la province, Moncton, Saint Quentin, Campbellton, pour ne citer que cela. Puis en une journée, on avait reçu 200 personnes. Fait qu'on s'est dit, on avait les capacités pour pouvoir élargir l'activité cette année. C'est pour ça que je me suis dit, avec les autres projets que j'avais déjà, comme les conférences pour présenter les entrepreneurs issus de la diaspora africaine, à chaque fois, je me suis dit, je pouvais juste combiner tout cela en un festival de cinq jours. C'est pour ça que j'ai eu l'idée de mettre sur pied le festival Chaleur Bantou. Et aussi drôle que ça peut être, son appellation fait référence au fait que la communauté africaine et spécialement les Bantou, c'est un peu à partir de l'Afrique de l'Ouest jusqu'à l'Afrique du Sud. C'est un peu assez accueillant, chaleureux et bienveillant. C'est pour ça que j'ai choisi le mot chaleur au titre et ça renvoie aussi à la région Chaleur pour célébrer son implication dans tout ce qui est immigration et intégration de nouveaux arrivants. Donc l'activité se déroule sur Bathurst et Belbe du 30 juillet au 3 août 2025. Alors le festival Chaleur Bantou est un événement culturel qui célèbre la richesse et la diversité des cultures africaines et de la diaspora. Le festival vise en effet à créer un espace de partage, de découverte, de célébration des valeurs universelles, d'unité, de diversité. Donc nous avons trois objectifs principaux qui sont : la mise en lumière de la richesse et la diversité culturelle du peuple Bantou. Parce qu'ici, on s'est rendu compte qu'en immigrant, on apporte notre propre bagage à nous et il était intéressant aussi de le faire découvrir à notre communauté d'accueil. Le deuxième objectif, c'est de mettre en valeur les talents artistiques et culturels de la communauté africaine et de ses diasporas, en plus d'offrir également une plateforme aux entrepreneurs et artisans africains pour exposer leurs produits et services. Fait que le troisième objectif ici est de renforcer les liens communautés entre nos deux communautés à travers des activités assez inclusives et participer à l'effort de retention, comme je l'ai mentionné tantôt, des populations dans la localité durant l'été. Alors nos principales missions sont la promotion des talents artistiques africains issus de la diaspora parce que de plus en plus, on rencontre des talents que ce soient des chanteurs, des peintres, des artisans africains qui n'ont pas vraiment de vitrine pour faire connaître leurs créations. Donc on essayait de mettre ce pont là supplace pour pouvoir exposer leurs produits. La deuxième mission également, c'est d'offrir un espace d'échange interculturel à travers la musique, le sport, la gastronomie, la peinture et les performances artistiques. Et enfin contribuer au développement économique et culturel local. Le développement économique dans ce sens où nous participons considérablement au tourisme de la région parce que comme je l'ai mentionné tantôt, notre modèle, c'est d'aller recruter des gens un peu de partout dans la province, les invités à venir découvrir notre savoir-faire dans la région Chaleur. Puis notre vision, c'est vraiment de créer à long terme une place ronde incontournable qui rassemble et célèbre les cultures africaines et leurs apports dans le monde tout en favorisant la diversité culturelle dans la région Chaleur. Puis nos valeurs sont la diversité et l'inclusion, la créativité, l'innovation, le partage et l'excellence. Alors je vous présente un peu là les dates, du 30 juillet au 3 août. Le lieu, c'est généralement Bathurst et Belbe. Puis notre public cible, c'est vraiment toutes les familles, les amateurs de musique, les gastronomes, les amoureux de la culture africaine, les communautés locales et les touristes. Donc pour cette année, on a essayé d'aller avec la base des 500 participants qui peut largement dépasser, mais ça c'est sur l'ensemble des activités. Alors là, je vais vous détailler en quelque sorte les activités que nous aurons. Nous aurons à l'ouverture le 30 juillet une conférence qui est un espace de réflexion et d'échange autour des thématiques essentielles telles que le développement économique, l'entrepreneuriat et les opportunités pour les communautés africaines en Amérique du Nord. Fait qu'on aura sur le panel plusieurs entrepreneurs issus de la diaspora africaine comme le monsieur Patrick Tetieu ici présent qui va partager son expérience pour déjà essayer de motiver les jeunes étudiants qui arrivent, leur faire comprendre que c'est possible d'étudier, rester, s'établir et puis entreprendre dans la région Chaleur. Alors nous avons eu suite à une idée de nos camarades, Jeremy Boucher, peut-être que certains connaissent bien. Nous avons décidé de mettre sur pied un mini concours de beach à petite échelle. Vu qu'en amont, le 30, on aura présenté des entrepreneurs établis aux étudiants. On essaie de les inciter grâce à un petit concours à suivre le même schéma. Et en fait, le 1er août, on aura un atelier dans sur la promenade Waterfront puis c'est vraiment ouvert à toute la population. Pour ceux qui veulent découvrir les pas de danse africains et puis c'est gratuit. C'est ouvert au public et puis c'est gratuit à toute la communauté. Puis on aura un danseur de la région Chaleur, un Africain Loïc Darlin qui va animer l'atelier en plus de deux autres danseurs qu'on a invités de Montréal. Puis le deux et le trois, on aura le marché artisanal. C'est où vous aurez les créations de plusieurs entrepreneurs que ce soient des coiffeurs, des peintres, des artisans, des designers même africains. Ils auront des produits exposés, ça va se passer à Belbe. En même temps que l'attraction majeure du festival qui est la coupe des nations région Chaleur qui sera sa deuxième édition cette année. Puis l'innovation qu'on a voulu apporter, c'est qu'on s'est rendu compte que l'année passée pendant le tournoi, il y a plusieurs familles qui sont arrivées même de Campbellton avec des enfants, mais les enfants ne semblaient pas vraiment être intéressés parce qu'il se passait avec le sport et tout ça. Fait qu'on a décidé de créer sur le côté un parc à jouer comme ça pour essayer d'occuper les enfants pendant que les adultes pratiquent le soccer. Puis la fin, le trois, on aura un concert de clochets avec des artistes de la région Chaleur et du Québec également qu'on a invité. Donc le concert, nous ciblons le parc Corona Nation. Encore là, on essaye de voir idéalement, on aurait voulu le tenir sur le même site que celui du Rip Fest, mais après discussion avec Ryan, il paraissait que le site n'était pas très souvent requisionné pour ce genre d'événement là. Fait que la meilleure solution pour nous c'était le parc Corona Nation. Mais encore là, on a une petite difficulté avec la quantité de barrières qu'on devrait utiliser pour pouvoir barricader le site parce que on essaie également de rentabiliser notre événement aussi pour pouvoir avoir un fonds de roulement pour l'année prochaine. Fait que c'était ça pour ma présentation, je sais pas s'il y a des questions en particulier.
ACFA. Que Belbe a eu un partenariat, vont faire partie de la commandite aussi, ils vont s'impliquer. Dans ce genre de festival que vous faites là, c'est très commun dans le sud de la province.
AC, on a participé, on s'est inspiré du sommet sous le safré d'Icton justement.
À ferro.
Pour pouvoir monter le nôtre.
Ouais, c'est des festivals qui se tiennent assez régulièrement, mais c'est nouveau ici. Ça va être la première fois sauf le tournoi de soccer.
Oui, ça va être vraiment la première édition. Mais comme je dis, notre modèle, c'était pas juste de divertir les gens de la population, de la communauté locale. C'était d'aller les recruter ailleurs et le meilleur canal pour faire venir les gens c'était la compétition de soccer. Fait qu'on a profité de leur présence pour pouvoir booster notre économie, notre tourisme local.
Parfait, on a une question, conseillez le blanc.
Merci, c'est une bonne question. Je vais même vous féliciter pour votre initiative, je l'adore. J'adore l'aspect networking, l'aspect affaires, l'aspect sortif, l'aspect familial, l'aspect culturel évidemment. Fait que moi, je voulais juste vous dire merci. Merci de tout ce que vous apportez de nouveau à notre communauté. Ça va juste la colorer encore plus de très bonne façon, j'apprecio énormément.
Et la commandite que vous recherchez, c'est certain que vous avez différents critères que vous avez placés. Mais la commandite, ça c'est probablement payer les danseurs, les chanteurs, les gens que vous allez emporter dans DHR pour les avoir, faire tout le festival au complet. Ok, parfait. Vous avez un comité mis en place ?
Oui, on a un membre puis il y a un parmi nous qui travaille sur le projet avec nous aussi. Puis on a quatre autres personnes qui ne sont pas présentes aujourd'hui. On est structuré vraiment par activité. On est réparti par des... moi, je chapote le tout, mais j'ai structuré l'équipe à activités parce qu'il y en a qui ont plus de compétences dans le sport. Ils travaillent sur le tournoi de soccer, il y a d'autres qui sont beaucoup plus artistiques. Ils sont sur le marché artisanal, le concours de danse et le concert avec moi. Fait que moi, je passe partout puis le concours de pitch, je suis dessus avec Jeremy Boucher.
Avec Jeremy Boucher, qui est vraiment bien, vraiment bien. Fait, le comité, il y a un comité en place pour les fonds. Donc ce soir, on accepte les présentations, le comité va se rencontrer. Dès là, ils vont l'emporter au conseil et le conseil va faire une décision. Fait, où chercher une date, avant quelle date ?
Je dirais idéalement avant le début de mois de juin pour qu'on puisse déjà confiner notre communication et puis démarrer. Parce que les invitations ont déjà été envoyées à toutes les équipes. Fait que les sites, on attend juste de voir exactement quel sera nos accompagnements pour pouvoir ajuster notre communication parce qu'il faudrait pas qu'on fasse une mauvaise promesse aux participants. Faudrait qu'avant de communiquer qu'on soit sûr de ce qu'on dit et de la faisabilité de la chose.
Parfait, on n'a pas d'autres questions, merci beaucoup et bon travail. On s'en va à l'école secondaire Episiguit avec monsieur Godin et monsieur Noël. Bonsoir. Ça va bien ?
Bonjour.
Bonjour, bonjour.
Alors merci de nous accueillir ici aujourd'hui pour vrai, c'est vraiment un honneur d'être là. Madame Lamis, chacun des conseillers, merci. Alors je vais commencer par me présenter, moi c'est monsieur Joel Godin, je suis directeur à l'ESN.
Moi c'est Étienne Noël, directeur adjoint par intérim à l'ESN.
Alors dans le fond, le but de ce projet ici, c'est vraiment d'être rassembleur, développer un meilleur sentiment d'appartenance envers l'école et aussi notre région. Le but est de garder le plus grand nombre de personnes possibles dans notre région au présent et au futur. Peut-être un petit peu pour vous parler de notre école, on vous a apporté quelques images, quelques descriptions. Par exemple, l'an prochain, nous serons 756 élèves dans l'année. Cette année, on était 806, pour vous donner un approximatif du nombre d'élèves. Nos engagements sont vraiment en lien avec les finalités de notre Conseil d'Éducation du district. D'abord, la première, c'est d'apprendre tout au long de sa vie. La deuxième, c'est de vivre une vie saine et équilibrée. Et la troisième, c'est de développer l'identité communautaire linguistique et culturelle. Le projet qu'on vous apporte aujourd'hui tient compte de ces trois parties là. Je vous dirais en commençant par la toute dernière, identité communautaire linguistique et culturelle, c'est vraiment de développer le sentiment d'appartenance et d'être capable d'offrir aux élèves un peu ce que notre région a pour eux. Ok, puis à travers ces activités là qu'ils vont voir sur le terrain, ça va leur permettre de se trouver une identité et de voir à quel endroit qu'ils pourront en mettre de leur propre couleur. Vivre une vie saine et équilibrée, c'est sûr et certain qu'on va aller toucher le côté physique peut-être un peu plus dans les sports ou les activités culturelles. Fait que dans le fond, ça développe vraiment un sentiment de mieux-être envers la région et ce qu'on a à offrir. Et apprendre tout au long de leur vie dans le fond, c'est vraiment de bâtir des apprentissages qui vont être durables. Ok, donc ça, c'est les trois parties dans le fond qu'on va chercher à développer au travers du projet qu'on vous présente aujourd'hui. Ensuite, le projet, qu'est-ce que ça consiste dans le fond, c'est quoi ? C'est de faire l'achat d'un deuxième autobus pour soutenir nos activités paras et péris scolaires. Quand je dis paras, je parle des activités après l'école. Quand je dis péris scolaires, je parle des activités durant les heures scolaires. Dans le fond, nous avons plus de 24 équipes sportives pendant l'année. On a plus de 200 ateliers, ça c'est avec notre projet d'école Réimaginée qu'on a eu depuis quelques années. Au début, on a commencé en avance trentaine, c'est devenu un peu plus. L'an dernier, on était à 45 puis là maintenant, on est rendu à 200 avec la nouvelle formule qu'on fait les ateliers le vendredi. On appelle ça l'événement des journées expériencesciels. Ok, donc là, ça donne une formule où est-ce qu'on peut avoir différents types d'horaires. Puis ça, ça nous permet de faire beaucoup plus et de se déplacer dans notre communauté beaucoup plus qu'auparavant. Et ensuite vivre pleinement les trois finalités du CED ou du Conseil d'Éducation du district comme je vous ai parlé tantôt. Notre objectif dans le fond, c'est d'offrir des expériences positives à un maximum d'élèves. Ce qui veut dire dans le fond que en ayant un nouveau minibus, c'est qu'on est capable d'aller chercher l'entièreté des personnes. C'est beaucoup plus inclusif parce que présentement, les personnes qui vont s'inscrire dans les sports par exemple, souvent, il faut avoir aussi conscience que ça peut occasionner des coûts. Quand on parle par exemple des parents qui doivent se déplacer dans l'ensemble de notre province, ça occasionne des coûts puis c'est pas tout le monde dans le fond qui vont s'inscrire par rapport à cet aspect là. De notre côté, on a déjà été capable ou on a été en mesure d'en acheter un, mais ça représente seulement 20 élèves seulement qui peut l'utiliser sur une base quotidienne. On va vous parler de données un petit peu plus dans les prochaines diapos. On veut aussi favoriser l'accessibilité aux sports pour tous. Ça se résume un peu à ce que j'ai dit pour une manière d'être capable d'intégrer les sports sans avoir occasionné des grands coûts. Renforcer les liens avec la communauté de la région, sûr et certain qu'il y a pas seulement des sports. Quand on fait différents types d'ateliers, par exemple les vendredis, il y en a une multitude d'activités qui visitent différentes parties de notre région. On peut même voir dans les photos qui sont là présentement et ont même venu au Conseil de Ville ici présent une fois durant l'année. On a aussi par exemple l'autre photo qui parle du relais pour la vie. Là, ça va avoir lieu dans quelques semaines au Centre Kyserving. Et on voit une autre photo de nos sportifs qui sont au Garinbraid Bathurst. Puis en passant, chacune des photos que vous allez voir aujourd'hui, ça a été pris durant l'année. Donc on apporte preuve à l'appui de ce qu'on apporte. Ensuite, on cherche aussi à encourager les jeunes à rester dans notre région après leurs études. Sûr et certain qu'il y a eu plusieurs années où est-ce qu'on visitait peut-être moins l'extérieur de l'école, surtout par rapport aux différents types de transports parce que là, ça occasionne différentes demandes. Aussi, si on parle des enseignants qui créent des activités en lien avec ça, sachant que c'est quasi assuré qu'on peut se déplacer, il va y avoir beaucoup plus d'intérêt pour créer des activités dans ce sens là également. Présentement, les enseignants y créent, mais on n'est jamais certain en bout de ligne si ça va être accepté ou non par rapport au transport parce que le minibus, il peut juste apporter 20 élèves. La majorité des classes en détient 25 et plus, d'accord ? Donc c'est peut-être juste de tenir ça en tête la raison pourquoi. Sinon, il faut faire des demandes d'autobus dans le district, ce qui n'est jamais certain. Je sais pas si vous avez entendu parler des nombreux petits coquilles de ce côté là, mais bon, regardez, ça fait partie de ce qu'on vit présentement. Mais en ayant un deuxième autobus, ça nous permettrait d'être beaucoup plus dans le fond, on pourrait s'occuper nous-mêmes des propres transports. En plus, c'est d'augmenter l'engagement des élèves. Dans le fond, plus qu'ils vont voir l'autobus se déplacer, les élèves vont vouloir s'engager encore plus. Là, je parle non seulement des sports, mais aussi dans les activités diverses et dans toute une multitude de projets. Créer de jeunes leaders et des citoyens impliqués dans le fond. Plus qu'ils peuvent voir ce qu'on a offert dans notre région, eh bien plus d'expériences qui vont en gagner sur le terrain et ça va aider dans le fond pour leur propre leadership. Pourquoi est-ce qu'on aimerait d'avoir un autobus ? Je vais essayer de ne pas me répéter parce qu'il y a aussi une réduction des coûts de transport à long terme pour nos élèves et leurs parents. C'est sûr et certain que quand on parle de l'essence, on peut parler aussi de l'hébergement. On peut parler de la nourriture quand ce qui se déplace à différents endroits. Plus de flexibilité pour les activités, dans le fond, c'est un peu ce que je disais, les enseignants vont beaucoup plus s'embarquer dans les projets sachant qu'il y a une forte possibilité que leur activité soit acceptée. Et aussi une meilleure accessibilité, on parle ici de l'augmentation des participants et de la diversité des expériences. Renforcement du sentiment d'appartenance à l'école et aussi à notre région. Alors c'est pas mal ça qui est notre but premier. Pourquoi est-ce qu'on aimerait d'avoir un deuxième minibus à notre école ? Bon, ok, là c'est bon tout, bonsoir. Maintenant, notre objectif pour le plan de commandite, au début, on a mis ça en place. Ça fait depuis 2022 qu'on est à la recherche de partenaires. Puis au début, c'était 300 000 pour effectuer l'achat de deux autobus. C'est encore le cas encore aujourd'hui. Donc on tend à établir notre 300 000 pour nos deux autobus. Mise à jour, monsieur Godin l'a expliqué tantôt, on a déjà acheté notre premier autobus. Ça a été fait en mai 2024. Ça a été utilisé jusqu'à présent cette année 98 fois. Ça équivaut à à peu près une journée, ça dépasse une journée sur deux qui a eu de l'école. Donc notre autobus est utilisé à fond. On a eu à refuser certaines activités parce qu'elles étaient déjà utilisées. Puis donner un exemple additionnel, on l'a utilisé pour 22 types d'activités différentes. Ok, donc c'est pas juste pour un équipe sportive, c'est vraiment toutes les équipes sportives l'ont touchée. On a aussi au niveau des ateliers, donc il y a une diversité au niveau des activités qui utilisent autobus. Ok, il y a certaines places qui l'utilisent seulement pour un sport. Nous vraiment on mise pour répondre aux besoins de tous. Donc les autobus sont, cet autobus ça est vraiment utilisé. Deux autobus, ça serait magnifique puis ça pourrait ouvrir d'autres possibilités aussi. Comme comme mentionné tantôt, les autobus qu'on veut, c'est limite de 20 personnes parce que les sports, c'est surtout 20 personnes maximum qu'un équipe sportive. Mais pour sortir une classe, on pourrait prendre les deux autobus puis ça pourrait fonctionner. Niveau de commandite, donc le plan de commandite, on a trois niveaux de commandite. On a le partenaire qui est 25 000 dollars, commanditaire qui est 10 000 dollars et supporter qui est 2500 dollars. Donc ça, c'est nos trois niveaux de partenariat. Niveau partenaire, c'est le niveau à 25 000 dollars. Et les participants pour les niveaux partenaires, ils sont Ville de Belbe qu'on a récemment eu 25 000 dollars par, McDonald's aussi 25 000, Tim Hortons, Formacie Jean Coutu, Rache Freinettes et Club Richelieu. Comme vous voyez, comme une diversité au niveau des partenaires qu'on a réussi à y aller chercher. Puis en passant, les photos que vous voyez à droite, c'est les photos de notre minibus qu'on a présentement. Puis la deuxième autobus qu'on va acheter va être une copie conforme de celui-là qui veut dire toutes les partenaires vont toutes être sur les deux autobus pour la durée de vie de l'autobus. Puis là, on parle d'une durée de vie qu'on estime de 15 à 20 ans. Donc pendant 15 à 20 ans, ces autobus là vont voyager dans la région avec nos partenaires dessus. Donc au niveau du sentiment d'appartenance, ça témoigne beaucoup. Ensuite, niveau commanditaire, je vais pas toutes les nommer. C'est pas parce que ils sont moins importants ou rien de ça. C'est tout simplement parce que vraiment le but de montrer nos autres partenaires, c'est de vous montrer à quel point que la région a embarqué dans notre projet. On a plusieurs partenaires ici qui croient dans ce projet là. Puis vraiment, on mise sur nos jeunes, on mise sur les finalités du Conseil d'Éducation. Puis niveau commanditaire, ça c'est les commanditaires qui ont accepté de donner 10 000 pour le plan de commandite. Et niveau supporter, c'est 2500. Donc en résumé, jusqu'à présent, on a réussi à avancer 247 375. On arrive proche du but. Le but souhaité, c'est qu'on a terminé d'avancer les fonds par la fin de cette année scolaire qui veut dire fin juin. Donc c'est pour ça qu'on a mis d'autres efforts et on vous demande votre appui de ce côté là. Donc l'ESN souhaite avoir une entente avec la Ville de Bathurst pour obtenir une contribution annuelle de 6 250. Donc, le SN souhaite avoir une entente avec la Ville de Bathurst pour obtenir une contribution annuelle de six mille deux cent cinquante pour quatre ans pour nous aider avec l'achat de la deuxième autobus. Et comme mentionné tantôt, la première autobus, vous allez avoir aussi le logo de la ville dessus, incluant deuxième autobus. Je pense que je vais laisser le mot de la fin à Monsieur. Alors, dans le fond, ce projet ici, c'est une collaboration d'une collectivité qui est rassembleur, qui est porteur d'espoir et qui est aussi durable. Donc, on souhaite pour les quinze à vingt prochaines années de pouvoir se promener dans toute la région, dans tout le Nouveau Brunswick et d'être fier de représenter toute la collectivité avec nous au travers de ce processus-là. Alors, un gros merci pour l'être accordé ce soir. Puis on vous réserve une période aussi de questions si vous en avez.
On a un comité en place, le comité va se rencontrer et dès là avoir des discussions. Mais juste par curiosité, pendant le quatre ans, le premier paiement, est-ce que vous l'attendez en vingt vingt-quatre ou vingt vingt-cinq? Excuse, vingt vingt-cinq? Mon Dieu, je suis bon en arrière, vingt vingt-cinq cette année ou en vingt vingt-six?
Pour effectuer l'achat, si on a les fonds, plutôt mieux que c'est.
Ok.
Par contre, c'est certain si vous acceptez, mais c'est seulement en deux mille vingt-six, on va certainement être content aussi. Mais préférablement pour faire l'achat plutôt, ça serait en deux mille vingt-cinq.
En deux mille vingt-cinq, parfait. Est-ce qu'on a des questions? Conseiller, Député Maurel.
Merci Madame Maurel. Oui, c'est plus comme un point, ça va qu'on, cette semaine, on a déjà été à une présentation pour le mieux-être pour Planet Jeunesse. Puis je pense embarque pas mal sur le même programme que Planet Jeunesse pour essayer de d'apporter les jeunes à faire quelque chose d'autre pour se tient occupé. Aussi, on a le CMA, le Congrès Mondial Canadien, qui s'en vient en vingt vingt-neuf. Vous allez être capable de louer vos autobus comme il faut aussi durant ce temps-là, ça va qu'a. Bonne chance puis c'est un bon.
Merci.
Bon projet.
Merci.
Très belle initiative. C'est vrai, on a participé à Planet Jeunesse au Casey Irving. Et de voir le beau travail qui sont en train de faire, qu'est-ce qu'ils essaient d'implanter ici? Si tu as besoin pour essayer de que nos jeunes soient plus sportifs puis ont plus d'activités récréatives que faire des activités non récréatives. On va le rester sûr, j'en garde le chef de police non récréatif.
Ouais, exactement. On est aussi dans le projet mégot qui est un peu en lien aussi conjointement, si vous voulez, c'est un peu dans la même ligne d'idées, projet mégot qui est aussi pancanadien de ce côté-là. Donc, les deux ensemble fait comme un tout. Merci.
Merci, merci beaucoup et puis on va vous revenir.
C'est là, merci beaucoup, à bientôt.
All right, thank you, Madame Mayor. Good evening, Council. Tonight, I will be discussing our street repair selection process. A good portion of the preparation for my presentation tonight has gone into preparing myself for the backlash online afterwards.
And the full party gets the next day.
We'll keep an eye on that. All right. But in all seriousness, why street repair prioritization matters? We have a very vast network and limited budgets. Our network, as we discussed a couple of weeks ago, is three hundred and fifty plus lane kilometers of streets. So with limited budgets, obviously, it's important to make sure that we do things in a reasonable manner. We have aging infrastructure and need a strategic planning for long-term sustainability. And our goal is to maximize short and long-term value and fairness in repair decisions. So the title of this slide is worst first versus best first in the asset management dilemma. So essentially, we're making our way into using the asset management process to make our decisions a little bit more database. But a quick description of kind of the old style and the new style. In the past, you really looked, people mostly looked at prioritizing your worst-conditioned streets. So anything that on the surface looked the worst. And then you have the newer style, which is best first, which is maintain good roads to avoid higher future costs. So you might see some of that on highways around Bathurst. It may appear that some of the roads are halfway decent shape, but they're resurfacing them. That's due to asset management. They're making sure that they're maintaining that top coat so they don't have to do complete rebuilds ahead of time by when the substructure degrades. So what we're really looking to do is a modern approach, the mix of both, using pavement management systems. So obviously, we're going to be doing some rebuilds of streets that are completely deteriorated. If we didn't, we would have those forever. So we need to make sure that we take care of those. But then we also start mixing in some asset management-based maintenance of top coats. So you see some of that going on with the recent pavings that we did on St. Anne Street a couple of years ago, St. Peter Avenue. So those are really just surface maintenance projects which are designed to extend the length of the total structure. So getting into building our list of priorities. We have some main objective criteria and a little bit of subjective criteria. So I'll get into that a little bit later. But our main objective criteria is a spreadsheet that we use, which is our paving priorities. I'll show you an example of that spreadsheet in a little bit. But on that spreadsheet, we have various scores. So we have a current condition rating in the streets. So that's kind of self-explanatory, how bad the street is, it gives itself a score. And that takes into account safety concerns and whatnot, so vehicle damage or cyclists or pedestrian safety. And then we have traffic volumes, which are mostly collected by a stationary accounting device. But some of them are, we can't do all three hundred plus streets that we have. So some of them, mostly local streets, we're just assuming low traffic volumes because most of them do have low traffic volumes and stuff for the main collectors. And then there's additional factors such as school zones, points of entry, tourism destinations in the central business district. So anything that kind of has a special factor tied to it is also given points on that scale. So here is an example of our paving-only repair list. Paving only is underlined there because we'll talk about utilities later. But essentially, this is our current list of streets, taking into account taking into account current pavement condition, traffic volumes and special factors. So any of the streets that are highlighted in green there are streets that are already listed on our five-year plans, both in our capital plans and in the provincial designated highway plans. Just because they're listed in those plans doesn't mean they're approved, but they're in those plans and they're slated to be repaired over the next little while. So this sheet is a, I think there's twenty-eight, twenty-eight items on this street. There's three hundred fifty plus items total. So there's multiple sheets of this. This is just the first sheet. And if you look at all of the names on that sheet, top to bottom, you'll recognize every one of those streets as a street that's pretty desperate need of repair. Won't go through them all, but it's a little small here. We have Bridge Street, San Anne Street, Merrimashie Avenue, McDonald Street, Shalora Street. The list goes on, we're well aware of which streets those are. So that would be the current priority list for streets if we were only looking at pavement repair. Which brings into question the don't pave, don't dig, sorry, don't pave then dig aspect. So really, we don't want to be repairing streets which have utilities underneath them that which will need to be repaired in the short term. Later on, you'll see a slide where the top coat of asphalt on a high-traffic street is really only going to last you fifteen or twenty years. So if you have utilities under that street which need to be replaced within that timeframe, you're really wasting your money paving that street. So what's really important is the coordination with water, sewer and power utilities. It avoids costly rework and premature failure. And repair timing is adjusted to match those utility plans. So if we put those factors in as well, we have our current total rebuild list. And so this current total rebuild list includes that same list we had a while ago with with pavement conditions, traffic volumes, special conditions. But it also takes into account a pipe age score. We don't really have the means to do pipe inspections. It's possible to do sewer pipe inspections, but it's very costly, so it's not something that we do. So we typically take our pipe ages into consideration for our condition of our pipes. Obviously, we have, we have water breaks, we have sewer clogs and whatnot. If we have those kind of condensed in certain hotspots, then we'll trigger that as a a pipe which is not only old but also in bad condition. So we will move that up the list as well. So if you look at the list, including pipe age, there's a few streets that jump out, namely Main Street, two hundred block, three hundred block, St. George Street, Douglas, Section Riverside Drive. These are streets with hundred-plus-year-old utility underneath. So the pipes were put in the ground in nineteen fifteen at some of these streets. Right, so that's kind of mind-boggling, but it's a fact. So obviously, those are at the top of the total rebuild list. But you'll notice they are not highlighted in green, which means they are not slated to be repaired in the next few years, five to ten. And the reason for that is because many of those streets in green are are being paid for with provincial designated highway money, right? So the province only covers the cost of the pavement rebuilds on those streets. And our current capital and utility budgets simply don't allow us to repair those streets, do total rebuilds every single year. I'll show you a little bit later on the number that we've done the last little while. So our current total rebuild list has a total value on it. If you look at, there's a column there that says approximate replacement cost. So that's a sort of a generic number of a dollar per meter for length. So it's adjusted for various types of streets, but it's a bit of a generic number. And so, oh, sorry, I'll get to this first. So a while ago, I spoke of objective criteria and subjective criteria. What you see here is our streets repaired since two thousand twelve, so twenty twelve to twenty twenty-four by region. So when I say subjective criteria, I'm talking about regional equity, right? So you hear a lot of people saying that, oh, they're only paving your friend's streets or councillor's streets or anything like that. This sort of demonstrates how we kind of spread the love a little bit around various locations in the city. So with all of the meters that's been done in the, between two thousand twelve and two thousand twenty-four, in yellow, we have the central area, which was downtown and South Bathurst. In blue, we have East Bathurst. In red, we have northwest, so that's anywhere north of St. Anne Street. And then in green, we have southwest, anywhere south of St. Anne Street and over towards Basin. And if you plot that on a map, it shows the division there, but it also shows the total number of meters which you've completed in every one of those regions. In the northwest, red area, seventy-six hundred meters. In the southwest, five thousand meters. In the central area, fifty-two hundred meters. And in East Bathurst, eleven thousand seven hundred meters. So there's been a fairly strong push to complete work in East Bathurst over the last number of years. And rightfully so, there's a lot of streets over there that are in pretty bad shape and a little bit older than many others. But certainly not being ignored as many people might think. And so, a while ago, I began talking about that total rebuild cost column there. If you add up all of that total rebuild cost, you end up with six hundred and thirty-eight million in today's dollars. So if we were to totally rebuild all of our streets, that's top to bottom. It's utility, water, sewer, storm, curb, sidewalks, everything. You'd be looking at a total rebuild cost of six hundred and thirty-eight million. So what that means is if the city were to invest six point three eight million dollars every year, it would take us a hundred years to replace all of our streets. So that's a little scary. And you may be wondering, how much are we investing right now in total rebuilds? And the answer is one point eight six million dollars. So since two thousand nineteen, our average rebuilds, you'll see a couple of years there where we haven't done anything, but a couple of big years where we've done a little bit more. But it averages out to one point eight six million. And what that means is at that rate, we're looking at three hundred and sixty-eight years to totally rebuild all of our streets. Now, when I talk about total rebuild, that's everything. That's water, sewer, pavement structure and everything. So we're investing more than one point eight seven million in our roads because we're also doing overlay and road maintenance on top of that. So that's something that needs to be done because the road structure is going to degrade faster than the utilities underneath. So on top of that one point eight six million, we're investing a little bit extra as far as road rebuilds, as far as paving is concerned. But at the end of the day, we need to do total rebuilds to turn over our infrastructure. So our water and sewer and our storm networks. So we're going to need to see a pretty significant increase in total rebuild output over the next number of years if we want to get anywhere near a reasonable amount of turnover on that infrastructure. So at three hundred and sixty-eight years, that's not looking great, especially when you take into account the typical lifespan of our current assets. So our water and sewer piping, we have sixty years there now. Sixty years is probably a little light for PVC piping, but for cast iron and ductile, which is a lot of what we have in the ground right now, sixty years is probably a pretty reasonable number. Our asphalt's fifteen to twenty years. Obviously, we can get fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty years out of some local streets with less traffic, but certainly those higher-traffic streets between fifteen, twenty years is about the max you're going to get. And then the road base and concrete structures, we're looking at again about sixty years. So some of the key takeaways, the repairs are data-driven, unlike some, what some people might think. And they're certainly resource limited. So coordinating utility repairs with road rebuilds is critical and asset management is going to help lead the way with that. We're advancing quite well and getting our asset management system together. Like you said, a lot of numbers you've seen tonight came away, came out of our asset management system. We're really just buttoning up our facilities aspect of that right now. So our public buildings, our pumping stations, our lift stations. Once that gets inputted, we're going to have a much better picture of our total utility side. The general side, there's also the facilities on that side as well that need to be put input. So we're hoping to have that as complete and ready to go for budget time this year. Fingers crossed on the teams working hard on getting that together for you. But at the end of the day, a massive influx of municipal, provincial and federal funding is going to be required to achieve a sustainable level of infrastructure repair in the future for sure. That's all I have, so I'm certainly open to answering any questions.
Wow. When I read the presentation, I was like, oh my gosh. So question for you, the one point eight six million, is that our actual budget? Or is that with hopes of getting funding with provincial and federal government?
So that's from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-five.
So we've invested one point eight six in five years?
Per year.
Per year.
Per year, yeah. And so to answer your question, this year is a good example. We do have St. Anne Street slated to get done for five million dollars. That's approved, that's ready to go, they're going to get started in a couple of weeks. There's another project on the cusp here of hopefully getting approved in the next little while. We're looking at another two million for that. Those are both from provincial funded, they're not from our capital budgets.
Okay.
So and we have gas tax, which is funding that. And we do take portions of provincially designated highways. We combine provincially designated highway projects with gas tax to complete the Merrimashie Avenue projects, for example, is that's how that'll be done. That skewed a little bit because two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, there were some pretty major projects there. So if you took those years into account, it would bump that average up a little bit, but we're still talking about hundreds of years to get full rebuilds. So right now, over the last six, seven years, we are averaging one point eight six per year. So we need to bring that up significantly for sure.
Thank you for coming in to explain because I know, I'm sure council does as well. I get so many phone calls and, you know, I want my street done, why isn't my street not done? And, you know, last year, there was a small pothole in going into my subdivision. And, you know, I knew that it was going to get done, you know, I flagged it like everything else and I knew eventually it would get done. Someone literally put a post with a flag saying that it was a golf course. And then they would throw the ball and the hole was about this big, you know? And I told my neighbors, drive around town, that tiny hole, you can drive around. Some other streets are in really bad shape that, you know, it would take a while to have repaired. That's scary. And, you know, I think what's important is that we're not the only municipality that's in this situation. Many municipalities, you know, we were talking with the mayor of Mar machine. He was saying that they have over a hundred and thirty million dollars in aging infrastructure that needs to be replaced. So we're all in the same boat. But I do appreciate, and I know, yes, we'll get calls tomorrow, but I appreciate that you take the time to explain so people can truly understand that there is a cost factor, especially with the budget that we have and the operational costs that we have. So let me ask you, we're going into budget next year. Getting more money in your department, would it help? Would you be able to manage it with all the workload that you already have?
Well, certainly, because what we're talking about here is full rebuilds, right? So that's not something that we do in-house. We do mostly just resurfacing in-house. Right now, we've taken on quite a load with the resurfacing that we're doing this year. So it's going to be a year, but we'll have to go through the summer to see where our capacity is at the end of this summer. But as far as road rebuilds, yeah, I mean, the more, the better. Uh but as far as road rebuilds, yeah, I mean, the 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 more, the better. There's a certain aspect of um contractor availability and whatnot, but when the money is available, then we do get more contractors bidding on 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 projects. And when the projects are larger, we do get more interest in those projects as well. So certainly, the more uh the better for for total rebuilds.
So just for the viewers listening right now, so Saint Anne, how many meters for five million dollars almost that it's going to cost us for a rebuild on that one?
Eight hundred and fifty meters.
Eight hundred and fifty meters.
Yep. So we're looking at about six million per kilometer of rebuild right now.
Yeah. And that's for the water, sewer and cover and everything else. Yeah. So just to give an idea, do we have any questions for Mr. Abernathy? Deputy Mayor, will it?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we're going to try to increase something. So if the street we know on the list, it's twenty five years before it even gets touched. You know, there'll be no pave left on some of those streets. So are we planning on getting more people in to do roadwork to be able to do more of it? Because I know now we don't really have the manpower or right at the limit of what we can do, so.
Yeah, uh cer- it's a it's a budget question for sure. Uh so uh the the throwing more money at it as far as 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 internal. Uh it's going to be a slower process to build up our capabilities to be able to do resurfacing. But I think some of those streets, which are in the conditions that you're that you're speaking of, are mostly streets that need utility repair, right? Um and so at the end of the day, we're not going to be able to do those streets if the if the if the there's a there's a very large portion of our streets, which were built between nineteen sixty seven and nineteen seventy two, nineteen seventy three. They all have duct iron or cat ductile iron or cast iron piping. Uh sorry, cast iron piping, ductile wasn't available till seventy two, seventy three. And so uh that utility needs to be replaced. So because if we go ahead and rebuild those streets, they're not main arteries, so we're not going to be returning to to repave those within fifteen or twenty years. The utility is going to be breaking down. It's going to be seventy, eighty years old before we get back to to repaving that street. So really, at the end of the day, we need to prioritize those streets as utility rebuilds as a as opposed to just resurfacing.
And that's where we have to do contractors for that type of work, because it's a complete rebuild.
Exactly.
So more money.
Yes.
Any other questions? Nope. Thank you very much, Mr. Abernathy, for taking the time. I know we've been sending a lot of questions your way, so.
No problem.
Bon, on va aller à deux points six, composition du conseil, cela est privilège de vote du maire. So council composition, salaries and voting privileges from the mayor. Monsieur Jacques Dubé, bonjour, bonsoir. So pour les les citoyens sur Facebook, um juste pour que vous sachiez, avec la réforme, avec tous les changements dont on a eu, euh la ville de Bathurst avait resté statu quo. Euh ah donc on n'avait pas vraiment fait de grands changements sauf ajouter deux nouveaux conseillers autour euh du conseil de la ville de Bathurst. So since the reform, the um this council, you know, we added two more seats to council, but there was not much changes that were done, uh salaries, councillor salaries. And we kind of looked at the structure of what's happening in the area. Merci d'être ici.
Merci beaucoup. Your worship. Deputy Mayor, councillors, CEO of Talat Pettigrew, some city staff, good evening, bonsoir. The mayor said, I'm my name is Jacques Dubé. I'm a uh I'm president of a company here in Bathurst called Strategic Engagement Chala. Engagement Stratégique Chala Inc. And it's a consulting firm that specializes mainly in in municipal policy, municipal operations, things like that. I do economic development work. I also I also do a lot of private work for private companies in the in the energy space, particularly in the financing of multi-residential. So that's what I am. But I'm here today to speak to you as a consultant in the municipal uh in the municipal sphere at the request of the city to look at the composition of the city council, make recommendations on in that regard. Look at the voting privileges of the mayor and also the salary levels of the mayor and councillors and the deputy mayor, of course. And of course, how uh council salaries are adjusted on an annual basis. So that's what the task was. And uh I will go and I'll I'll get into it right away. So the methodology, we I basically went out and collected data from about eighteen municipalities in Atlantic Canada. Um the reason for Atlantic Canada only particularly is because this is kind of a regional economy and and sort of buying power and salaries are are more comparable within Atlantic Canada than trying to compare it to Ontario or B C or Alberta or wherever it brings. So we kept it within Atlantic Canada, chose eighteen municipalities. We also reviewed your your current bylaws, your worship, historical salary data and relevant provincial and municipal legislation bylaws across the country in the in in relation to the the items that we're talking about here tonight. Um I'll also point out that consultations with the mayor, the councillors, city staff and the public were not in scope. So this is an independent study uh done by myself on behalf of my own my own consulting firm. Okay? So this is a pretty busy slide. And what it does do, it lists your eighteen municipalities that were that I use for comparative analysis. Some of them are in New Brunswick, P E I, Nova Scotia, Newfoundland, Labrador. What you see there is the population of those municipalities, and you have a number of councillors in each of those municipalities, and you also see an average uh of councillors in each of those municipalities being seven. Yeah. The 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 other column speaks about residents per councillor. So why is that important? Well, some would argue that the number of residents you represent uh uh influences the workload, influences the workload. Size of municipality has some bearing in this, some would argue. Um but you know, you could, I could also argue, many will argue the contrary, which because when you look at uh councillors, um residents for councillors in places like Fredericton and Moncton and uh Mount Pearl, they're all much higher than you you'll find here in in uh in Bathurst. And again, most of those are all volunteer positions. They're not paid positions. Exactly the same as what you folks do as councillors in all those municipalities. So when you look at the average of residents per councillor, that average is twenty six hundred and forty two. And the average of municipalities under twenty thousand population, which is Bathurst comparative group, the average is actually eighteen hundred and ninety five councillors, residents per councillor. If you went to six councillors, the number would be twenty five eighteen, seven would bring you to twenty one fifty eight. And um Bathurst with eight councillors means eighteen hundred and eighty nine residents per councillor. Now, there's probably other ways to look at the workload of councillors, but this is the one that I chose. Uh it's probably the most consistent, the data you can you can find consistently. I didn't go and exhaustively exhaustively interview every councillor across all those eighteen municipalities to talk about the workload. It would have cost you an arm and a leg, and it wouldn't be worth it. But this is a way to look at the subject matter in itself and in a in an objective way. So as I mentioned previously, the council composition data shows that Bathurst has fewer residents per councillor than the average in the sample. Do you see the already averaged municipalities under twenty thousand, eighteen ninety five, Bathurst currently has sixteen seventy eight, six is twenty five eighteen, et cetera, et cetera. So there's no question that the data shows that uh you could reduce your size of council based on that fact, right? So what are the options? We looked at five options. One, keep the current complement of mayor and nine and now councillors at large and maintain maintain current voting privileges. In other words, the mayor only votes in the case of a tie. Second option, reduce the number of councillors to six at large, subject to the mayor being granted the same voting privileges as councillors, which would bring the uh number of residents per councillor to twenty five eighteen. You could reduce, option three is reduce the number of councillors to seven at large, without a change in the mayor's voting privileges, which equates to twenty one fifty eight residents per councillor. Fourth option we looked at is reduce the number of councillors to eight at large and grant the mayor the same voting privileges as councillors, which would equate to eighteen hundred and eighty nine residents per councillor. And number five, reduce the number of councillors to eight at large and maintain current voting voting privileges. In other words, the mayor wouldn't vote with eight at large, and that would be eighteen eighty nine residents per councillor. So think about some of the pros and cons, uh or advantages on each of those options. Certainly, nine councillors at large, the status quo is not recommended, given the number of residents per councillor below the median. Uh eighteen sixteen seventy eight versus eighteen ninety five, and the average number of councillors in the comparative group is seven, right? Option two, six councillors at large, increases the number of residents per councillor by fifty percent. Sounds like a big percentage, twenty five eighteen versus sixteen seventy eight. And allows the mayor full voting privileges and decreases the size of council by three. That's option number two. That option, the council, uh a council with six councillors at large would be comparable to Quistham Sis, Grand Falls, Windsor, Mount Pearl and Merrimashie, that number being operable operable in those particular communities. Uh and of course, Moncton, Fredericton, Depp all have much higher residents per councillor and a larger population base. So one could argue that a smaller council may be more efficient, while others may argue that a larger number may provide more diversity. Option three, seven councillors at large, increases the residents per councillor by twenty nine percent, twenty one fifty eight versus sixteen seventy eight to a number that is aligned with Somerside, Truro and Gander. Does not provide for full voting rights for the mayor, and the odd number of councillors means uh odd number of councillors means the mayor will rarely be in a position to break a tie. Option four, eight councillors at large, aligns the number of residents to councillors with the compared to group average, eighteen eighty nine versus eighteen ninety five, very close, and provides the mayor with full voting privileges, eliminating the possibility of ties should all council members be present to vote. Option five, eight councillors at large, aligns the number two of residents to councillors with compared to group average, eighteen eighty nine versus eighteen ninety five, with ties being settled by the mayor. So the recommendation here is that council petition minister local government no later than July first, twenty twenty five, to reduce the number of councillors to six at large, and that bylaw twenty three oh seven be amended to allow the mayor to vote once the minister has made a determination regarding council's petition. And if reducing the number of councillors to six is not acceptable to councillors, recommend that reducing the number of councillors to eight at large and allowing the mayor to vote. Now, before I take any questions on all that, I'm going to, I want to discuss the issue of the mayor's voting privileges, and why the why the both issues are related. Right? So when you have a, when you have nine members of council and a mayor, then the mayor rarely votes, and is only there as a figurehead. If the if the number is is even and the mayor votes, then mayor always participates in the decisions, right? When all all folks are there. So so what are the advantages of of the mayor's voting? Number one, increased accountability. A voting mayor is is directly accountable for all council's decisions, making their stance on issues clear to the public. And as mayor, as the mayor is a voice in the face of the municipality, having a vote is consistent with that reality. More representation. A mayor's vote ensures that the vote of the executive leader is part of every decision potentially leading to a more balanced policymaking. Prevents gridlock. Can prevent prevent gridlock, potentially, if the council is evenly split, the mayor's vote can serve as a tiebreaker, helping to move decisions forward. Stronger leadership. A voting mayor directly shapes municipal policy with councillors and supports their elected agenda. A mayor, only one voice on council, nonetheless is affected by the public to lead and to deliver on commitments made not only by the mayor, but by on all council's priorities as a as a as a collective. Number five, consistency consistency in decision making. A mayor's consistent involvement can lead to a more cohesive governance rather than being limited to occasional votes and a figurehead position. So what are the disadvantages? Disadvantages are potential conflicts of interest. You know, a voting mayor may wish to advance their own agenda and setting remaining neutral, possibly causing biased decisions. So those who argue for no vote for a mayor would argue at that point strongly, right? Now, no political party system is present within municipal councils, and that also mitigates that concern to a degree of a conflict of interest. Weaken legislative oversight. If a mayor has full voting privileges, it may blur the line between executive and legislative functions, reducing checks and balances in the minds of some. Reduce council autonomy. Council members may perceive a change in their influence if a mayor has equal voting power on all issues. Partisan or potential for partisan gridlock or deadlock. If a mayor has strong political leanings, their consistent vote can deepen divisions rather than fostering compromise. And of course, lastly, and these are all all inclusive, I'm sure you all can think of other disadvantages and advantages of all this, but the last one on the disadvantage list that I came up with was less mediation role. Mayors who vote on all matters may be seen as another politician rather than a neutral facilitator, reducing their ability to mediate conflicts within the council. Now, some may think, may feel that that's a bogus argument, and I tend to agree with that, simply because a mayor's political, mayor's elected politically. So of course, mayor's a politician, right? So you have to think about that as well. Now, here are some other reasons uh why the I feel and recommend that the mayor should vote. One, in New Brunswick, voting rights of mayors are determined by individual municipal bylaws or procedural rules. For example, land use decisions in the in the planning bylaws and planning law statutes in New Brunswick, the mayor sometimes has to vote on on planning matters no matter what. The Municipal Government Act in Nova Scotia requires mayors to vote, period. That's a that's all encompassing in Nova Scotia. Municipal Government Act in P E I restricts mayors from voting except in the event of a tie, like New Brunswick. Towns and services, the towns and local services act in Newfoundland and Labrador restricts the mayor from voting except in the event of a tie. However, the mayors of Mount Pearl and Saint John's, both cities, vote by charter. Many municipalities, including Halifax, um uh Mount Pearl, Saint John's, all operate under municipal charters. And so larger municipalities have charters, and much of their much of the powers of the mayor and council fall under that. And lastly, and most importantly, in every other province in Canada, the city mayors have full voting privileges. So we're actually an outlier in New Brunswick. New Brunswick is an outlier, it's been an outlier a long time, and I think it's time for that to change, in my opinion. Uh for what it's worth, I think there's, I think most municipalities across the country, by a wide margin, have the mayors all voting. So again, um most Canadian mayors are are obliged to vote by law. The mayors of Atlantic Canada's fastest growing cities vote, namely Moncton, Halifax, Saint John's and Mount Pearl. And the mayor of the city of Merrimashie has full voting privileges. The other reality, and you'll, I I elaborate a little more in the actual written report, but the power of the mayor is their is their presence, their influence, the words and their vote. That's the power of mayor. And if you tie the mayor's hand, one hand behind the mayor's back, in that respect, you're probably not serving your residents well, and you're not serving the organization well. Um allowing the mayors to vote is is what one ingredient for of being a progressive um in terms of driving municipal successes. And the 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 evidence is obvious. If you look across the country, and I looked at every province across the country, and the 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 evidence is obvious that it's best to have a mayor that has an equal say uh as a councillor on in decisions, and can get out there and represent the city and explain why decisions are made and and have a stake in the matter, as opposed to just being a, you know, a loudspeaker and a figurehead position, right? It's not, it's not the right way to go, in my opinion. And of course, voting, a voting mayor levers this perceived power and presence of a mayor to the benefit of the community, which is what residents and external parties expect. If you went out there today and asked everybody out there, is the mayor, I make decisions at city hall? They'd all say, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Truth is, you don't. People around the stable make those decisions, not you. But that's the perception in the in the in the in the in the public, right? So the recommendation is that the mayor vote on all matters, because the mayor is elected by the entire municipality. Allowing the mayor to vote on all issues ensures the electoral mandate is considered in decision making. And since the mayor is still one vote among many in a so-called weak mayor system, and I'll explain that in a minute. Allowing them to vote reinforces their role as a collaborative leader rather than a passive figurehead. And in voting on all matters, the mayor can signal a position on key issues, helping set priorities and guide council's discussions rather than acting as a passive tiebreaker. Just want to go back to the comment of weak mayor system. That's a, that's kind of sort of commonly used in the business. Weak mayor system means we're not United States. Like, we're not in the, many municipalities in the U S have what they call strong mayor systems. In fact, in Ontario, they introduced legislation to give the mayor, Toronto, a strong mayor system, strong mayor powers, and 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 other municipalities, including Ottawa in Ontario. So that trend has been moving up here, but only a trend in Ontario, not anywhere else. There's been some talk provincial in provincial governments in the Atlantic Canada about looking at that. But a weak mayor system doesn't mean the mayor's weak. A weak mayor's means, system means, is that it's a C A O, council C A O organization here. That's how municipalities, most municipalities in Canada are organized. You have a council, and you have a C A O. C A O is the operational side, council is the policy side. The weak mayor reference is simply, it's simply a comment that says or means The weak mayor reference is simply, it's simply a comment that says or means that the mayor has no more say than any other member of council. They have an equal vote and that's it, right? That's what that means. Just want to be sure everybody doesn't go out, start talking about the weak mayor. Not, it's not the case here. Or I guess, you know, I shouldn't say it's not the, it's the case here, but not in fact, right? So. The next part of the report speaks, speaks to salaries and this slide shows the historic numbers since twenty twenty-one. I won't delve into that, you can take a look, it's in the report. This chart is a comparator amongst all the eighteen municipalities surveyed, right? And I'm going to call that option one. So the average, when you look at the average, mayor's salary was fifty-nine thousand five seventy-three. So I'm not recommending an increase in mayor's salary because you're already above the average, right? The deputy mayor's average is thirty-two nine eighty, rounded up thirty to thirty-three thousand. And the councillor's salary average is twenty-eight thousand one twenty-three, rounded up, rounded down to twenty-eight thousand. So that's comparing everybody in the, in the, in the, uh, in the, on the list, including Bathurst, right? So that's everybody's salaries of those, of those municipalities, including Bathurst, that's what the average is. I don't think it's fair to use that comparator, frankly, because there are some municipalities that are much larger and more complex, et cetera, and there's some that are smaller. So I think we, you need to look at something that's closer to your reality. Here's one, here's option two. This option is basically bringing in Merrimashie, Emerson, Quistamp, Sis, Summerside, Truro, Grand Falls, where all have a population base of relatively close to Bathurst, right? And those, that compares the salaries of all those officials and of course, the average for the deputy mayor would be thirty-one thousand and for the councillors would be twenty-six thousand based on that comparative group that includes Merrimashie. But I would argue that Merrimashie is an outlier because they're actually paid, they're actually quite underpaid, Merrimashie. So I don't think it's fair to include Merrimashie in the comparative group necessarily because it is truly an outlier compared to all others. So if you look at option three, which includes Emerson, Quistamp, Sis, Summerside, Truro and Grand Falls, Windsor and Newfoundland, Labrador, the deputy mayor's average is thirty-two seven forty, rounded up to thirty-three, councillors would be twenty-eight five twenty-one, rounded up to twenty-nine thousand. So I'll talk about each option a little bit and give you some of the pros and cons. Certainly option one, which would bring, keep the mayor as is, deputy mayor thirty-three and the councillors at twenty-eight. Main reason I don't recommend that one is because the comparators include the eighteen municipalities, including the larger municipalities like Moncton, Predrickton, Deaf and Mount Pearl. It's probably not reasonable to include them in the mix. You know, does size matter? Like you argue that the larger municipalities do have different challenges, the sheer volume of work, meetings, public engagement, required more residents, businesses, more infrastructure, more policies to manage, work and citizens' concerns to address and a larger bureaucracy to navigate. It is an argument. I would also argue that size doesn't matter all the time because I mean, I remember going from Moncton to Halifax and somebody said, whoa, what a big difference. No, not really. It's just, just a few more zeros on the budget line, all the same issues. And, and I would say, speaking to Tom one day, I said, there's not much difference between Halifax and Bathurst either, it's just the numbers of zeros. You're dealing with the same issues, right? It's just a question of volume and, and, and complex issues and, and probably getting into, or getting into service levels that are not necessarily going to happen here, but have to happen there, you know? It's that kind of thing, right? It's more of a structural challenge than anything else. So that's option one, which is not recommended. Option two, this brings the deputy mayor to thirty-one thousand, councillors at twenty-six. And the reasons to choose option two would be budget constraints. If cost control is a priority, then option two keeps the councillor's salary slightly lower, twenty-six thousand versus twenty-nine thousand in option three, thus reducing the total expenditure. Uh, it aligns, there's an alignment with broader averages when including Merrimashie in comparison, the average councillor salary is twenty-six four sixty-five, which is close to the twenty-six thousand figure in table three. And then of course fairness without overcompensating, the mayor's salary remains competitive, aligning with the adjusted average of fifty-nine two thirty-three excluding Merrimashie, while councillor salaries remain reasonable without exceeding the median. Option three, again, mayor stays the same, deputy mayor thirty-three, councillors at twenty-nine. Reasons to choose option three, better alignment with comparable municipalities, without Merrimashie as an outlier, the adjusted average for councillors is twenty-eight five twenty-one, which is much closer to the twenty-nine thousand figure in table four. Compensation for workload, as Bathurst councillors are expected to have a workload comparable to those in option, in option threes comparative group, a salary closer to the adjusted average may be more appropriate. The average population of option three comparable municipalities is fifteen-nine ninety-one, which aligns more closely with Bathurst's population to fifteen-one one zero. And of course, lastly, attracting a, attracting qualified candidates, a slightly higher salary could encourage more diverse candidates to consider running for office with the emphasis on may. You know, it may happen, it's not a guarantee is for sure, right? So what are your key decision factors when coming up with a decision like that? Financial sustainability, if the city is under budgetary pressures, option two is more fiscally conservative. It's competitive and, you know, competitive and fair pay, if attracting diverse candidates is a concern and council prioritizes fairness. Option three provides better compensation without being excessive. And the public perception, if tax fear approval is a concern, option two may be viewed more favorably, whereas option three might be justified if council's workload is increasing and it likely has, given the establishment of the Regional Service Commission and the addition of territory to the city because of the recent amalgamation. So if the city wishes to remain financially responsible while offering fair compensation, option two is a reasonable choice. If the goal is to ensure that elected officials are competitively and fairly compensated compared to similar municipalities, option three is a logical option. That means mayor at sixty-three, three sixty-nine, the deputy mayor thirty-three and the councillors at twenty-nine. And we recommend that council adopt option three for the reasons stated by amending bylaw twenty-nine oh six effective in twenty twenty-five, which provides fair and comparable compensation for the mayor, deputy mayor and councillors. I'm going to stop there, Worship.
Okay.
And take any questions you may have before I move on to the next section.
All right. So do we have any questions? Councillor LeBlanc.
Thank you, I just had one question. I noticed that our neighbors weren't in that and they have roughly the same amount of citizens in us, so would that not have been a good comparison also or?
Which neighbors?
Bel Bay?
Oh, Bel Bay, it's not a comparable municipality, assuming on, on, on population size and sometimes, not the same type of municipality as the others, in my opinion.
Just wondering, because they were roughly the same populations.
Yeah.
Assuming you mean streets and services, et cetera. Thank you.
Councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Worship. I completely agree with you, Jacques, on all your reasons why the mayor shouldn't vote, no offense to the mayor, but the reasons that you have, they make sense. The reasons for, I feel like we already have that and not just with our current mayor, but with mayors that we've had all twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, like I feel the, the mayor's opinion was always known whether they had a vote or not. You know what I mean? I don't think there was any surprise with how previous mayors have felt with regards to a situation that was on the table. My, I think, and I'm really kind of on the fence with it, with that, because I think a concern of mine is a lot of times things come to council and it's been like this for many moons, where the mayor will tend, will meet with certain organizations or groups or peoples prior to council having a presentation by an individual. So sometimes mayors can be swayed prior, do you know what I mean?
Sure.
So like, that's kind of really where I'm hung up on it, quite honestly.
Right. Well, I think, I think it's a legitimate concern. I mean, it becomes, a lot of it comes as a matter of style and, and personal relationships, right? So, you know, the mayor is, is like, should be like any other councillor, if they're going to, if they have the right to vote, they should be like any other councillor and pass judgment on the face of the evidence being put before you, right? You know, it's, I'm sure it's fine and there's nothing wrong with any councillor meeting with any special interest group and to get detailed information, whether it's the mayor or a councillor, in my opinion, but.
See, I don't see that.
This is a quasi judicial body, right? You're a quasi judicial body in many respects, so you should be making decisions only after you've received staff information and advice and, and all that before, you know, before making, taking any position on any matter, right? You need to have the evidence. Evidence-based decision-making is extremely important in a municipal context, right? So I think that, that is just, and it becomes a question of practice, right?
Yeah. With regards to the salaries, do you feel that we, that this council is really underpaid?
Yes.
Okay. Because I look at our workload and it's really, and I don't want to say this, but it's decreased a lot, like we've had a lot of committees that have been cut over the years that is handled primarily by men, because I remember my first term, not a word of a lie, I would have fifteen committees on the go.
Yeah, that's a lot.
And now I'm down to four or five maybe? Do you know what I mean? So like to me, it's got to be like, were you made aware of committees and workloads that the councillors have or it was just based solely on the population of the municipalities?
Strictly on the population and the, yeah, yeah. We didn't, and, and I think the administration purposely kept it objective in that respect. So, you know, the, the scope did not include me going out and speaking to every individual councillor or the mayor or anybody else, like that was simply a.
Simply population-based.
Simply a mathematics exercise.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jacques.
Deputy Mayor Willett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I kind of disagree with Councillor Henderson's comment because I've seen mayors in the past just sit back and say, well, I had nothing to do with it, it was just council that made the decision and, and washed their hands of it. And I've seen it for many, many years. On different mayors in this city. So I, my, my opinion is the mayor should have, should have a voice, so they have the same retribution as the rest of council if things go south. And as far as our workload, I think, as far as I'm concerned, since I came on to council, my workload's been the same, so.
All right. Do we have any other questions? So what we will be doing this evening is we are accepting the presentation, but we're also going to be speaking about it. We have Mr. Dubé with us tonight. We have an opportunity tonight, I'm not saying a decision has to be made tonight, but I will be questioning every councillor to get your feedback this evening. The documentation was sent last Thursday, we have an opportunity, he's here tonight and it's not to have him come back in a month's time before we make a decision. So I am going to want to discuss this matter. And again, I appreciate the fact that yes, myself, staff, nobody was involved, our city clerk reached out and all the work was done independently with no communication with any of us, so. All right.
So if there's no further questions, Worship on that part of the report and I'll, we'll on to the next, the last part of it?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So one of the, one of the tasks that was, that was assigned was to look at how you adjust your salaries on an annual basis, right? There's all kinds of formulas across the country about how councillors, mayors and council determine their sal, determine their salaries and how they adjust them on an annual basis. The most common methodology is using C P I. And, you know, you already, you, you do that now, you based on the consumer present, it's on the average from New Brunswick from the previous year and you do that effective January one. If you look at all the, this, this slide and the next slide, and this is again in your report, identify how, not, not, not all the eighteen are in there because I couldn't get information from all of them, but I added a couple more that I, that I found. So the majority of them are using C P I. So, you know, at the end of the day, that approach is very consistent with all the other municipalities, not only in Atlantic Canada, but across the country. And I would recommend no change to that practice. You already have that baked into your policies and your bylaws, so I was, I was certainly recommend that you keep that practice in place. Lastly, and this was not in scope, but you know, I, I was hearing different comments from different people about diversity on councils. And I would certainly recommend that you consider options to provide childcare support for the elected officials. You know, this may result in more diversity and equity in terms of council representation. And of course, that, such a policy would be aimed at to make council more accessible to individuals with young families by offsetting some of the childcare costs associated with their duties. Again, it's just something that I came up with on my own reading and, and thinking about, you know, how do you make councils more diverse? We all talk about it, but how do you, how do you, how do you actually do it and incite that is another question. So many municipalities, some of the trends you'll see across the country are, are many municipalities are looking at that now and saying, you know, how do we ensure that, you know, all, all folks are represented on municipal councils? And that, your worship, is concludes my, my presentation, my report.
Thank you. So going to that one again, because I agree, I think, you know, we need, we need to bring a younger generation in and, you know, it's not always easy with families. So is this something that you would review, like have you looked at how they did it in other municipalities?
No. No, I didn't, I didn't, it wasn't part of the scope, it just sort of came up in discussions and I thought I would, I would bring it to your attention in, in any case, something like that, you would have to have a, you know, a serious look and see whatever other, other municipalities are doing and that kind of thing, yeah.
It's, it's the second time I've heard it, I've actually went to a conference where they said that and I'm very pleased, I was actually pleased to see it in the report that, you know, it was brought up. Okay. George Cuff as well, I mean, we've done a session with George Cuff, he also said, actually he was not aware or didn't maybe that the mayor in Bathurst does not get to vote, because of course him being in the west part of Canada, all of the rest of Canada, actually the mayor gets to vote.
Yes.
So, you know, this belongs to council to make this decision and I've never shied away from giving you my opinion, so I'm going to give you my opinion on a few factors and I would like feedback from council. So I truly believe that deputy mayor and council should be taking an increase and for me, I would recommend option three. It's, I know we're not comparing to Bel Bay, but Bel Bay councillors are making more money than you are right now. So, you know, I think it's just to make it fair for everyone. And the number of seats, of course, that will, I, I believe nine is too many. So we either need to go down to seven if you choose that the mayor doesn't vote or six or eight, whatever council decides. But sitting here for four years now, I'm on my last year, I could have easily at any time said, not my fault, council decided that way, right? Your role as mayor as you sit and if your council makes a decision, your role is to decide to, to support them and say, yes, this is council's wishes. Did I always, did agree or disagree? Yes. However, my role is to follow through and back up what council decision is. I believe that a mayor should have a right to vote and the reason for that is, is that I don't shy away from everybody else and then be able to be part of the conversation and part of the vote. And I can tell you, on many occasions, while my four-year mandate, I've been told many times, yeah, but it's okay, you don't get to have a vote, so your opinion doesn't really count, right? So it's, it's easier said than done. The fact that we see the other municipalities doing it follows suit. But again, this is not for this council here, this is something that would apply in twenty twenty-six at the next election and who knows is who's going to be there in twenty twenty-six. So when we're looking at these factors, it would be into twenty twenty-six. Councillor Honda's, feedback.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm going to give you the mic, hold on. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Dubé. I was one that was pushing for something like this to have happened because I do believe it needed to be done and having it done professionally, I think it makes a lot more sense. My suggestions or what I'd support would be option three. I'd bring the members down to eight and I would let the mayor have a vote.
Thank you. And the K P I, I think everybody's fine with the K P I index, that's what we've been doing, yeah, C P I, sorry, yeah, C P I, everybody's fine with that, thank you. All right, I'm going to go to Councillor Knowles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to compensation for councillors and mayor, I, I would be comfortable with option two on that point. As far as the mayor voting, I'd like to see it revert back to seven councillors without the mayor voting, just like we had previous. without the mayor voting, just like we had previous to the government reform being implemented. No disrespect to our mayor, current mayor or any former mayor, that's just the way I feel about that.
All right, thank you. Councillor Legacy?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just curious, in your research of the other municipalities, because I I I kind of like the idea of going back to seven as well, but I'm not fully opposed to the mayor having a right to vote. Have you ever found something where it's seven, but the mayor's vote counts for two?
No.
No? So that way it can still be an even, an odd number, but the mayor still has.
Yeah, that there's, I've never heard of a a mayor getting a weighted vote on council, you know? I don't think it exists in Canada at least.
Okay. I not, I don't agree with the how the calculation came for option one, but I agree with that increase, it makes more sense, it's less than option three for councillors, but the mayor and deputy mayor say it's the same, so I'd be fine with that one. And I can't see going to six when we're adding more area, when we were seven before the reform. So I would say seven, no vote for the mayor.
Okay. Councillor Scary?
Thank you very much for your report, Mr Dubay. It's very enlightening, this is my first year on council, first time on council, actually, not my first year, but came in with the amalgamation. And I must say, it's it's definitely a real eye opener and a really great experience, and hopefully can continue on. I I would have to agree with with option number three. Having reviewed, having read the the report and then and then listening to the points for and against, I would be in an option number three, for sure.
All right, and mayor vote, no vote?
Yes, mayor vote, yeah.
Mayor vote, eight seats, six seats?
Eight councillors.
Eight councillors? Okay, thank you. Councillor Anderson?
Just a quick question. Correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, if we only had eight people, like, we had, you know, a a regular public meeting and we only had eight councillors and we had a tie vote, doesn't the mayor currently have the right to break the vote?
Yes.
Break the tie?
Yes.
So the mayor already has tie breaking capability?
At eight, yes, at eight. At eight, the mayor has an opportunity to break the tie.
That's what I thought.
Yes. Some municipalities do that one as well.
Yeah, I mean, really, it comes down to a question of you see the mayor as an equal member of council or not? Right? That's the question. And if you, if the mayor
That's not fair.
Well, no, I'm, you're asking, I mean, you're asking, you're paying me to give you my advice, I'm giving you my advice. The question, it's it's really a question of philosophical, it's really philosophical question, there's no right answer to that, right? I mean, I have my opinion on it, and you've heard already four councillors over here with varying opinions on the on the question. So, there is no right answer, but I would strongly recommend, and I've strongly recommending that the mayor be given, given, granted the the right to vote for many of the reasons that I that I've already put in the report, but also, you know, councillor Willett or Deputy Mayor Willett made a very good point too, right? So the mayor can't hide under the covers when they have a vote. Right? They have to stand up and support and and say, and and speak out loud, right? As opposed to hiding under the covers and letting council decide. Right, I think it's unfair to the electorate personally, that the mayor, who seemed to be, you know, making decisions and participating fully in all the council and city, city councils decisions, really not having a say, right? It's not, I don't think it's fair. And I would argue that the rest of Canada is not wrong on this one, right? That's the other reality, most of, most Canadian municipalities, the mayor has a right to vote. Why is that? There's obvious reasons for that, right? But I respect your view.
I'm really torn with it. I have to be honest, because I I I do respect the role of mayor and the duties of the mayor, I I completely respect it.
Yeah.
But I'm really on the fence, and I
Yeah.
I'm really on the fence with it.
Well, you're not alone, I mean, there's a lot of folks that that struggle with that question, I've been in other situations in my career where this question has come up and it's not a, it's never, it's never a hundred percent, there's never a hundred percent unanimity on the question, right? But, I mean, the the options are there, and you have to choose, choose an option that you can best live with.
As for the salary portion of it, for me, it would be option two.
Two, okay. Seats?
I I don't, I don't know, honestly, like, I'm so torn on this one. I certainly would not agree to six, because as either councillor Scary or councillor Legacy mentioned, to go from nine down to six when we had seven prior, this doesn't make logistical sense to me. And prior to us going down to seven, we were at eight and we had reduced it to seven.
Right.
Um, so seven.
Seven, okay.
Yeah.
We still have two councillors that are not here, so we're not, this is not finalized, we still have
Oh, it's not finalized?
Not, well, that's why I need, we still have time to change your mind, I just, I'm just because since we have Mr Dubay with us tonight, it's a perfect opportunity to ask the additional questions like you've just asked, as opposed to him being gone, and then we sit here and start having a conversation, and he's not here to answer any questions.
I could think longer.
All right. Deputy Mayor Willett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it's not hard for me, option three and eight councillors, and the mayor gets the vote.
Okay. Conseiller Leblanc?
Merci, Madam Mayor. Parlez comme le conseiller Willett et Honda. Et Scary, je pensais, option trois. Moi, c'est le contraire, je comprends, des fois, ça dépend du comité que tu es tu, mais écoute, c'est des semaines de quatre jours, quatre soirs par semaine, mais parfois les fins de semaine, ça arrête pas. Je dis pas que je fais pas ça pour l'argent, mais c'est le point d'être rémunéré pour le montant de de travail qu'on fait. Huit conseillers, la mère est-ce qui vote, je suis tout à fait d'accord avec le fait que si le maire va dire de quoi publiquement ou quelque chose pas dire, mais sans cacher ou mettre le mettre le 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 fardeau sur le conseil, participer au conseil, parce que vous êtes l'image, que ce soit vous ou un autre, comme tu dis, nous autres faisons ça pour l'avenir. Vous êtes l'image de la ville, vous devez avoir un certain un certain droit de vote cet égard, moi, je suis tout à fait d'accord avec option, avec option trois et huit conseillers, la mère est-ce qui vote?
Okay.
Ou le maire?
Merci beaucoup. So, again, I think to bring it back, so we have to look at not now, but in three years from now, in five years from now. So, you know, in the election of twenty twenty-six, not what we believe here, we have to look at the bigger picture. Donnons besoin de regarder encore plus loin puis de regarder aux élections vingt vingt-six c'est puis trois ans ou quatre ans plus tard et surtout le fait que il y a tellement de municipalités que le maire a le droit de vote. That being said, whatever decision you make, I will respect and I will accept and we will move forward. Because in a year from now, I may not even be here. So it's, look at it this way, look at what we want for, and the fact that we have an expert in front of us telling us these are the recommendations, recommends three because of the seats and because of the amalgamation, that the mayor gets to vote, that we keep the index. So option three for salary, seats with the mayor gets to vote. Now, six I find is, I would concern low, so if the mayor gets to vote with eight seats, that could be an option. Or you can say eight seats and the mayor doesn't vote and she gets to be a tiebreaker. That's not his recommendation, it's not part of the list, but that could be an option that you can have as well. Merci beaucoup d'avoir pris le temps de venir présenter avec nous. And I wanted to talk this through, because from the beginning, this council has been as transparent as we possibly can with the citizens. We want people to know, that's why we have, all our meetings are public, we try to have every public meeting possible so that people actually get to see what's truly happening in our cities. J'apprécie que vous avez pris le temps de venir.
Merci, merci beaucoup.
Merci. All right. So we're going to go to Business Arising ATV Club. Mr Pedegrum, I'm going to give you the mic, so you can actually join this conversation with me. So last week, we had a presentation from the ATV club, and there was three requests that came in. Two of the requests, Mr Pedegrum, correct me if I'm wrong, but these requests basically council can't just make those type of decisions, because it's part of rules and regulations, and we have to go through the provincial government as well, right?
It's part of a bylaw, so it's a bylaw procedure.
Okay, so those two we cannot bring this evening, it's not something that can be discussed. But the one that can be discussed is ATV given access or giving the walking trail in East Bathurst where the track is one point six kilometers, if I'm not mistaken, to ATV. We had all the presentations last Monday, and I am coming to council. This is not something that needs to go to a resolution, that needs to be voted next week. It's just a yes or no from council, and the reason for that is the trails belong to the MiGMA, and it is a walking trail. So I'm going to go again individually, unless someone has any questions or anything that they would like to ask, I'm going to go individually again and ask for yes or no. So yes would be you give, you will require to give the land to ATV or give ATV access. No would be no, it stays, that is cool where it is right now. Councillor Anderson?
No.
Deputy Mayor Willett?
No.
Conseiller Leblanc?
No.
Councillor Hondas?
No.
Councillor Knowles?
No.
Councillor Legacy?
No.
Councillor Scary?
No.
All right. So no it is, I would have said no as well, just for transparency, and we'll be able to follow through. Grants request, grants committee recommendation, who do I go to? Do I go to councillor Leblanc? Okay.
I don't have that in front of me right now.
Ah, tu l'as pas? Okay, Carol, est-ce que tu l'as?
Je peux, je peux ouvrir mon ordi. Ah, là-dessus? Okay. Bon, je vais juste simplement lire les recommandations. Si vous avez des questions, je commence quand on arrive avec ces ces décisions-là, s'il vous plaît, ne vous gênez pas. Faque le premier, il est clairement écrit, ils sont tous clairement écrits pour ici le conseil, mais évidemment, les gens, la maison, les boires, pas nécessairement, je ne sais pas. Premier, c'était la Luga barbecue, ils l'ont demandé à quinze cents dollars. Nous autres, on a recommandé, le comité a recommandé cinq cents dollars par événement, écoute, c'est pas qu'on pense pas que c'est je vais en parler un peu, on pense pas que c'est une belle initiative, mais au contraire, on se fait demander de l'argent tout bas tout côté. J'ai pas le dernier résultat, j'ai là que comment ce qui reste. Mais je sais qu'on avait pris d'autres décisions aussi qui vont venir s'enlever de là-dessus. Faque à un moment donné, on n'a pas le choix malheureusement pour la population à l'écoute. On a un budget à respecter pour facile de rester à l'intérieur. Le Curling Club, le Curling Club, ça va être un grand bénéfice pour la ville dans l'avenir et on évite des des gros sous à débourser dans l'avenir avec l'excellent travail qu'ils font, donc ils ont demandé soixante-quinze mille dollars sur les cinq prochaines années. Nous autres, on supporte. Le soixante-quinze mille sur les cinq prochaines années pour la ville. François Foullem, il fait de l'excellent travail pendant, il fait des très beaux calendriers, donc je pense, l'année passée, il en avait distribué. J'adore son travail et ce qu'il fait, que c'est pour la ville, que ce soient les photos au titan et tout. Pour ceux qui le connaissent, il fait de l'excellent travail. Faque on a décidé, on a pris la moitié, on voyait offrir six cents dollars. Ou c'est sur notre recommandation, évidemment, il faut que le conseil l'approuve. La Société des Arts, the Arts Society, là, c'est ça. On a aimé en donner un peu plus, mais on avait déjà donné de l'argent pour deux mille vingt-cinq, sept mille dollars et cinq mille qu'on avait donné en deux mille vingt-quatre. Faque malheureusement, autant qu'on aimerait d'avoir cette petite pièce-là, on donne huit cent cinquante dollars sur le trois mille neuf cents demandés. J'espère qu'ils vont réussir à trouver le manque à gagner et puis, écoutez, ils ont juste besoin de venir nous voir, on va certainement travailler avec eux pour essayer de trouver des fonds quelque part, mais la ville comme telle, on commence à être très limité en budget. Festival de théâtre en Acadie, ça, il y a des, ça, c'est aussi, c'est pas juste un festival, il y a aussi de l'enseignement qui se fait là-dedans, et puis chez les enfants de tous, l'Acadie, incluant ESN, qui sont impliqués, donc on a décidé de leur offrir le cinq cent cinquante dollars, on a recommandé, en tout cas, le cinq cent cinquante dollars qu'ils demandaient.
Faque on en a un, deux, trois, quatre, cinq. All right, so La Luga, we'll start individually, La Luga, five hundred dollars, La Luga, cinq cents dollars.
C'est trois deux, hein?
Hein?
Trois deux, parce qu'ils font deux événements.
Oh, ils en font deux, c'est fait trois deux?
Oui.
Okay, fait ça serait mille dollars.
C'est ça.
All right, so any objections or any questions on the five hundred dollars times two? Mille dollars pour La Luga? No. Okay. Curling Club, seventy-five thousand over five years. Any objections on that one for the Curling Club? Oh, they did a very good presentation, so. Okay, Foullem, six cents dollars, any objections on that one? Okay. Art Society, eight hundred and fifty dollars, huit cent cinquante dollars pour Art Society, any objections? Deputy Mayor Willett?
I don't have any objections, but if they don't go ahead with the thing, then we we shouldn't be giving them the money. If they don't go around, ahead with that theater piece or whatever they're doing, then.
Yeah, we should only give the money once we know this is going to happen. If it's not going to move forward, we're not going to give the eight hundred and fifty thou, uh, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Bonne motion, belle motion, Madam Mayor.
We can put that on roads. All right. Puis Festival du Théâtre, cinq cent cinquante dollars pour Festival du Théâtre. Les volumes fermés, hein? Festival du Théâtre, cinq cent cinquante dollars, est-ce qu'on a des objections? Non? Parfait, on va amener ça la semaine prochaine à la résolution? Okay. Oh, excusez-moi, oh, sorry. Councillor Legacy?
Uh, I'm just noticing here that it says discretionary, only ten thousand eight hundred and fifty left. I'm guessing for the Curling Club, it's coming out of the TAL tourism, okay, perfect. And the rest would come out of the discretionary?
Well, I'm going to give you the mic, hold on. These are when you hit your buttons, I don't have to look, okay, I got you. I have to screen this screen.
At this point, this is what we're doing, we're trying to take out of the discretionary, and that's, we're trying to really focus tourism on that tourism fund, but at some point, there might have to be, right? Because we're, as you see, we're getting tons of presentation and we're running very low on cash. So there may be some dipping into one, but I mean, at the end of the day, it's all one budget.
It's all in the same pot.
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I was kind of curious, that's why, well, j'avais dit vingt vingt-quatre, mais vingt vingt-cinq pour ESN, parce que ça va être amené, mais si c'est quand même un gros montant, puis on n'a aucune idée qu'est-ce qui nous reste comme budget pour vingt vingt-cinq? Puis l'année est pas encore finie, on aimait pas rendre là. Eh, fait, on a du travail. Fait, on est correct avec ça, Carol, vous avez toute l'information? Okay. Oh. Councillor Knowles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just before we move ahead, I want to thank the Grants Committee for all the work they do, there's a lot of things they have to consider, they get many requests. I served on that committee too, it's not easy sometimes. You want to please everybody, but sometimes it just doesn't, doesn't happen that way, so I want to thank them for the work they're doing.
That's true, merci. Très apprécié. Oh, councillor Scary, yes, he's on the committee with with councillor Burnett, that's not with us this evening, so yes, thank you, Scary. You felt the love. All right, so we're going to nomination for deputy mayor. Do we have any names on the table? Is anybody recommending somebody? Councillor Hondas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, I'd like to nominate councillor Knowles.
Councillor Knowles?
Deputy Mayor, just following suit to what we had before.
Okay.
He gets his, it was his turn last year, I think, but he decided to, so I'm putting up for nomination.
Okay, so do we have any other nominations on the floor? Well, repeat it again. Any other nominations on the floor, anybody know? No? And the email was sent, on on sait qu'il y a des conseillers qui manquent, mais il y avait, le conseil savait, ça fait quelques semaines qu'il savait que ça s'en venait, fait, il aurait pu être nominé par courriel. Donc, les deux conseillers absents sont pas avec nous, qui veut dire que ils sont pas présentés ou ils ont pas envoyé une nomination ou leur nomination. Fait, on a Fait, on a conseillé Knowles à la table, parfait? All right, so we'll bring it to resolution next, next week? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just assuming. You said no last year, so.
Yes, I did say no last year.
Yes.
I want, first of all, I wanna thank my nominator and my fellow councillors, I will accept the nomination. Thank you.
Good job. All right. I skipped the part, I just took it for granted, he said yes. My apologies. Bon, well, this was a very interesting meeting, in a rencontre assez intéressante. Meeting adjourned.